It's after, yeah, um, sorry. It's thirty-four minutes after twelve, and we're gonna call this meeting. A copy of the order in the meeting is at the southwest wall, just north of the door. Can we go around and let everybody say their names? Mark Craft, Jerry Cooper.
TJ Volker, County Board.
Mike Whale, County Board, Sunshine District Number One.
Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director.
Clever dude. Dakota, don't laugh at his jokes, it's just.
Sorry, I didn't mean to paint there.
I'm district center on the other end of the county from the Sunshine.
I saw him laugh.
Chris Rogers, District Three, home of Twenty-Fourth and Glory.
All right.
All right, now you got it.
Kendall O' County Third.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator.
Patrick Fleming Del County Administrator.
Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director.
Has every, we have three applicants for one seat.
Do you wanna hear from that wall?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
We're, we're just introducing ourselves, Larry.
Larry Shore. Dakota Smith.
Catherine Mall County Administrator.
Okay. We have three applications for one spot. Dakota Smith, one of the applicants, is sitting here. I know all three applicants, I've talked to all three of them over the years, and they're all very qualified. Now. I'm sure you know Glenn Moore.
Yeah, yeah.
From the Building Commission.
Be a whole lot easier if I didn't know anybody else.
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation, if you don't mind me asking?
I, I don't have a recommendation, I think we should collectively discuss and come to a consensus. Yeah, we can hear from Dakota, would you like to say something?
Thanks for the opportunity to be here, and thanks for the opportunity to apply to the new position. I am a self-proclaimed real estate and land use nerd. I spend my time, some of my time, on the week evenings, teaching at UNO, real estate brokerage, as well as real estate law for undergraduates with the program for real estate and land use economics. So this is something that, that's not a high-paying job, it's something that's a passion of mine, so I get involved and I try to teach the next generation coming up behind me about the importance of land use economics and the importance of law as it pertains to real estate. One of the first things I did whenever I moved to Nebraska was I read up on all the master plan documents, because that's the sort of thing that I like spending time looking into. So I, I love, I'm passionate about local governance and local land use issues, so it's an opportunity to be a part of this, and if you have any questions for me, how do you feel about this?
Why would you like to be on the planning?
Well, I believe that it's important to have fresh blood, like give, give a good, uh, give a good perspective on what's going on with the county. I, even though, you know, the, the area, the land, land area that seems to be at the scope of this commission is not great, it's some of the most important areas of our county, and making the right decisions about how we utilize the land as the city and this county grows is really important. So I'd love the opportunity to be able to help with those decisions.
Okay, you've got quite a nice resume, too.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that you're here. Chairman. Were all the people aware of this meeting so they could have been there?
Yes, Captain, Professor Malmo.
So I'll just be real transparent and state my thought.
Oh, Karen, you heard from our office that this was gonna happen?
Yes, yes, Karen, Karen was wonderful.
I, Mark, would just state, you know, you're looking for consensus, and I'm not gonna be blunt. You know, as far as I'm concerned, Dakota being here and this resume, I think he seems like a pretty good young man, and I'm appreciative that you came down and, you know, coming to the meeting is part of the, you know, success that we have, so hopefully you'll maybe get this position. So that's my take, Mark.
Chris, do you have an opinion? I know you deferred to Clara.
No, I mean, if they, if, I'm, I'm impressed, I'll, you know, but like I said, I'll, I'll sneak seat there.
It sounds like we have a majority voting.
He looks, I mean, immodently qualified. A stockman in Australia on a million-acre ranch, I'm not sure how much that helps, but the stilts are pretty cool.
If, if that is a question, I'll tell you that, I was intimately aware of land use economics, it was a million-acre cottage, they called stations out there. So as far as utilizing the land and being intimately aware of how it's gonna be used and the best, highest and best use, you know, that was a wonderful way of getting that perspective.
I may have a farmer, it's a favor to me, that I might have you help out. That'd be clever.
Hey, man's doubling up to farm next to a river.
I wouldn't go as far to discuss favors for elected officials, but I would say is that I do, one of my key value adds for my friends is lifting heavy things from one point to another.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, IST, Mr. Chair, is a motion in order?
And, and I, this looks great, and I'm comfortable with it, it's my only hesitancy is we've got two other good people as well. I mean, Glenn Moore has been wanting for a long time, he's been asking for so many years about what opportunity, if we, I mean, I, I'm comfortable, I think Dakota would be great on that, no question about that. But I hope we have more vacancies coming up, 'cause we've got more people interested.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. The, every year, the, there are nine members on the planning commission, three of them, three terms expire every May, in the May, every year. So there will be three, three potential vacancies, they, they either appoint, reappoint them.
You're talking about the end of this May, I mean, in like three months?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good, all right.
Yes, twenty-twenty. Yes, and so I, I will notify Karen Cole of those, of those upcoming vacancies, of those upcoming appointments here and within the next few weeks.
May I ask you to include how long they served when you did that?
Yes, we'll, we'll provide the same kind of report as I gave.
Well, and attendance is a biggie to me.
Yeah, no kidding.
You know, we, we don't know who's attending, who's not.
Thank you, that's a good, that's great, that's right.
And I remember you had applied for this before.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a comment to the Commissioner's concern, is that I did, my first time to apply for this was, I believe, in 2016. I think that the county probably made the, the right call, that there was a more qualified candidate at the time, and I spent the time in between building up my resume in a very applicable way, so.
Very good, wow.
So you wanna make a motion?
I would, I'd like to make a motion, could we appoint, uh, Mr. Whale, Dakota? Second, sorry, I screwed up your last name.
Where, where do you live?
We really can't vote here.
I live within the city.
To recommend.
You're, you're within the city limits?
I am, I walk away from the outside, this position is open to either.
Okay.
So I would like to put this on the next meeting.
Well, put it, put it on the County Board agenda, yeah. Well, this would be the recommendation of the committee. And, and it's up to you, you don't have to come back for that meeting. I mean, I appreciate your being here today, and that's quite likely is why you're getting the nod today. We, this will be on the County Board agenda then in a couple of weeks for ratification. You're welcome to come to that meeting, but you don't have to.
I plan on doing my best, I, I'm a firm believer that showing up is half the battle, so I'm very excited.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like you'll at least come to the meetings when they're, when they're scheduled, and that's important.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Okay, that's on the agenda? I'll look at the agenda. Here's environmental services updates, and we're gonna start with solid waste-related items.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. And I'm gonna run through most of this pretty quickly. Some of it's updates, some of it, some things that we are working on, some of the things that are going to show up on your agenda here in the, in the coming months, to give you some ideas. One of the things that we're working on right now is a change, a potential change in our Scalehouse software that we use. Right now, we utilize a product called PC Scales, and both Waste Management and, and the county are wanting to move away from this. There are some advantages to going to what's called Fast Lane, which is, is a waste management proprietary product. What we're, what we're currently doing right now is, is kind of our due diligence in terms of what we need to do to, to make this compatible with our interface into Oracle, so we could do the billing and accounts receivable collection for the credit customers that use the landfill. Right now, we have attorneys for waste management, and the county are looking at a non-disclosure agreement which Waste Management is requiring of the county, because this is a proprietary product. So, so they're negotiating that right now, and then, once that's in place, then we'll, we'll move forward with some implementation.
What is the advantage of Fast Lane over PC Scales?
Uh, one of the advantages we see is, is that it will streamline some of the, the recording and paperwork on, uh, with regards to special waste. Special waste requires waste profiles and manifest paperwork for each load that comes in. And right now, there's a second step, data entry step in the process, which introduces potential errors. We feel like it, it's going to be a better system overall. I think it'll be a better system overall for, in terms of backups and restore from a data security standpoint as well, so.
What bothers me is since it's a proprietary program to the people using, made by the people using the landfill, that bothers me. Unless we could have somebody very well skilled study the code to make sure it is coded correctly. I would have concern.
We are, as part of our due diligence, taking exactly that into consideration, looking at, at ways that we can, for lack of a better term, audit, audit things periodically and randomly to verify that accuracy and integrity is maintained.
You know, I share that concern. I think, you know, we've, we've seen a lot of difficulty in the past with dot com, because their programs are written by people who work there and so forth. I remember years ago, at the pension committee, we were not online, and so I pushed for it, and Kathy was reluctant. And we ended up with an employee saying, "How long can you write it?" And I said, "No, that's no good, because when that person leaves, then there's, here's the mystery." And I think there's been problems, I, I'm always very concerned, because then, you know, I, I don't mean, I'm not trying to throw cold water on it, but my experience has been similar to what Mark brought up, is that there's a, a real gap in what's going on, unless we have someone who's, you know, over it, so to speak, and, and is neutral, if I could say it that way. I, I know nothing about computers, believe me, I think everyone knows that, so, but I'm just saying. Could I suggest, have you talked to dot com about this?
Oh, yes.
Okay, what do they say?
We've had, from, from the very outset, I've had dot com enlisted, and I'm relying on dot com to, to provide that backend technical analysis of, of what, what the program does. Dot com has to be intimately involved, because they help make the interface from the data file, from the Scalehouse, into that transition into Oracle, so that we can invoice. So, so there, there's high involvement from their standpoint.
Well, maybe that's, I guess, ask their judgment if they feel comfortable with, if changes have to be made, are they gonna be, is it gonna be a bandit holding them up?
Yeah, is, is there also a tremendous expense?
Yeah.
To recuperate, uh, re, uh, to, to integrate in this program?
The, the contract with Waste Management as we have it puts all the responsibility for the, for the computer system, the scale system and all of that on Waste Management, it's their expense to do it.
Including the integration into?
The integration really is, is minimal on our side, because we're, as part of this, we're requiring that they provide us the format that we already have, that we are used to, so that we're not making changes on our end. They have to adapt the file system on their end to provide that to us. Good.
Anybody else have questions? Patrick?
I have no questions.
Okay, all right. Uh, we are also pursuing credit card processing in, in a couple of different forms. One is point-of-sale to landfill, and I, I would love to have had credit card payment options available there long ago, but there are a couple of things that have kept us from doing that. And, and one is the ability of a third-party vendor to be able to, to make this work. And secondly is our internet connectivity there is, is pretty poor. So we've got some, some issues to deal with there, we're looking at some different options. The other one is having a credit card option for payment for the credit customers that we bill on a monthly basis. And we're also looking at a, an electronic payment option as well. And that's probably actually gonna happen sooner than the other one, but we're just working on that right now to provide some options and convenience for, for customers.
I'm sorry, you know, the Treasurer's Office does this and may have some advice, where you can buy licenses, and I think they have electronic as well. I don't mean to be interjecting all the time, but.
No, we're, we're actually, the Treasurer's Office is intimately involved in especially the second part of this.
Okay.
The combination, I know, but then we use, there's a quote lockbox.
Yeah.
Procedure that we go through with those, with those credit customer invoices.
That's what I was gonna mention.
Yeah, we're trying to keep a county-wide system, so that all the groups that have interfaces and take credit cards, we're trying to just make sure we do it consistently.
So, so they are, and, and we're somewhat at the, at the mercy of the Treasurer's Office, of how fast we can move forward with that, but that is integrated with the Treasurer's Office. Diane Wallace kind of serves as the intermediary for some of the IT stuff on, on our end and, and the Treasurer's Office as well.
So you'll be, you'll be charging for a transaction then as well, two or three bucks?
There, there will be a fee involved, and that was actually, the fee was a, a point-of-sale issue out there because of the way the, the credit card company was looking at the landfill business. They were saying it, it needed to be a, a set fee, not a percentage.
Right.
And it would end up being, you know, for a, for a twenty-dollar landfill charge, you'd be, you'd be paying a fee that was in excess of that. So it was just not reasonable and feasible at the time, so we're, we're taking another look at that.
Could I make a suggestion, just cover costs, not try to make a profit? That'd be, I, I don't, I would need to, the people, could start, private people would start dumping, I mean, they'd be, hell with it, I'm not paying. Anyway.
Yeah, the costs, costs will be associated with the credit card user. You know, we're not, we're not looking to subsidize that, so. Anybody else? Okay. One of the things that the, the Board has done in the past, or we, we have done as a county, is to, is to provide free tonnage to a couple of different organizations. One was the county engineer, basically, it's just, it's still the county providing the service, dumping materials at the landfill. We have provided through, through a resolution in two thousand and seven and, and again in two thousand and eleven, the ability for them to dump up to, I believe it's twelve-hundred-and-fifty tons of material every month without additional charge. We're looking to, to continue that, but we're also looking to eliminate the, the second party to, to those resolutions, and that was, historically, we had given the Department of Transportation, or Department of, now Department of Transportation, similar accommodation, up to twenty-five tons per month. We are looking to discontinue that, and per the advice of the, of the County Attorney's Office, they would like us to just run a resolution back through the County Court clarifying this.
I'm agreeable, I don't know, but, talk it to the, uh, to the State. Ask to the State for all this, or maybe get to us.
Well, we would, we would have the.
That was not on the agenda.
Yes, well.
The Department of Transportation thing would, would be probably affected July one, so that it's, it's not an immediate curtailment, but it would be affected July one if the, at the Board, so.
So we've given them free tonnage in the past?
Correct.
And we're discontinuing it?
Correct.
Could I ask why? County train, so much?
No, this was, this was really me looking at it and saying, you know, what are, is this in the best interest of the Douglas County taxpayers? And, and I, I just, I, I don't feel it's justified. This is my recommendation coming to you.
Okay, so, if, we're not losing revenue, that's for sure, but we are losing tonnage, which is okay, I mean, you know.
Well, the tonnage that we were paying, I mean, we weren't really getting reimbursed for.
And I'm sorry to ask so many questions, what, what do we do about people who have flood damage? I mean, the, the, people who have had damage and trying to bring in building products or part of their home that's destroyed, what, what's the policy on charging them?
Policy is that, is that they're gonna get charged the regular rate unless we do something specifically for that type of thing. I think what you'll see going forward is, is some more perhaps proactive things that we learned from the 2019 flood. And I'll, I can touch on a couple of those as we, a little bit later in the presentation.
Good.
But basically, it's being a little more proactive and, and putting, maybe putting some county-sponsored dumpsters in some places initially.
Oh, yeah.
And then finding out that, that the cost for those, we can probably get reimbursed, at least on, on a good share of those.
You know, and what I'd like to suggest, too, there are some neighborhoods in some parts of Omaha that have terrible dumping. That'd be great, I think we could get the city to do the same with dumpsters. I, I did, and it really was remarkable, people used them, it's crazy. I don't know, we, we get in this distance or not, but I'm sorry to pause, I'm gonna leave. That's why Mark's not running for reelection, is because of me.
So.
He and Udo are talking.
So, you'll, you'll probably see the free tonnage resolution on your, on your agenda later this month.
Relating to the county engineer or the, the?
But it'll be both.
Okay.
Basically, it's, it's a cleanup resolution, because there, there were two previous resolutions that may,
Right.
Different references, Cruz is recommending that we just do one resolution to clean all of that up and to clarify exactly what we're doing going forward.
Well, let's make waves with the State, will anybody notice?
I will touch base with the, the contact at the State.
All right.
And let them know, County Board is, is looking to, to consider this on such and such a date. They can show up if they wish.
Bye.
At that point, okay. Just to give you a, a quick tonnage, I'm giving you a tonnage update, basically. Five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven tons, 2019, that was up five-point-two percent from the previous year. I would expect that that trend will probably continue. We put in some, some different rates back in April of 2019. They give us the ability to capture some different waste streams. Waste Management put in a, subsidized and put in a, a tipper, which allows them to take transfer trailer waste now in a more efficient way. So there's more of a waste stream coming in that way as well. So we anticipate that that will continue.
Yeah, Ken, I was just looking at your year-to-date results, and, you know, through late winter, you guys are at or above budget in revenues and expenses, which tells me that your, your tonnage is actually running pretty high this year.
It's, it's, yes.
And, and what's the key drivers of that?
I think you're seeing some, some different waste streams that are coming in. The waste industry is, is interesting, because you have a fair amount of competition. You have two big players now in, in Nebraska with Waste Connections and Waste Management that are, are very much competing against each other. And you have smaller companies that will kind of pick and choose who they wanna play with. And so you've had some people shifting allegiances there, and some of those allegiances have shifted away from Waste Connections and now shifted towards Waste Management and taking stuff that doesn't point. So some of that is, I, I expect to continue. Waste Management has done some things to, to make it more desirable and more attractive for that.
You know, on recycling, with the whole issue of China not taking it anymore, and.
Yeah.
So if you wanna recycle, it actually, you know, I know that I get it through ABES, and it might kind of double. So do you think more items are not getting recycled and are just going to the, um, regular landfill or not?
Yes, yes and no, and in a couple of slides, I'll touch on that.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other questions on this? Okay. One of the things that we're involved with right now is, is some discussion with, over household hazardous waste and creation of a statewide working group to, to look at this issue in a more comprehensive way. So last year, in the last legislative session, LB-580 got introduced. It was really looking to try to find a more sustainable funding source for household hazardous waste operations. Right now, there's a lot of grant money that goes into household hazardous waste facilities and their operation across the state. And unfortunately, that grant money tends to be a little ephemeral at times, and where the legislature will, will go and start picking away at that, that funding source. So LB-580 was really trying to identify a more sustainable, stable funding source. Out of that, basically, the, the bill didn't get out of committee, the discussion there was we need to back up and ask some questions about how we are handling household hazardous waste on a statewide basis and so on. So a working group was put together, and it's looking at five different areas. One, best practices in, in other states that have proven to be very effective. Second bullet, targeting producer responsibility and pushing the, the responsibility for some of the waste that's generated back to the producer. Latex paint is a prime example here, where we spend a lot of money and resources dealing with latex paint. There are producer responsibility legislation in a number of different states now. It's called a paint care program, it's very, it's very progressive, but it puts, puts the responsibility for, for excess paint back on the producer, the manufacturer of that.
Producer being manufacturer?
The manufacturer.
Not the designer?
Yeah, manufacturer, yes. Also, sustainable funding, again, looking at that, how, what's the best way to, to do this overall in the context of, of more of a statewide approach to household hazardous waste? What should we be collecting, what shouldn't we be collecting? Latex paint, for example, is not hazardous, per se. So could we, could we better spend HHW funding on things that, that are more toxic to the environment and so on? Education's a piece of this, and then the Collection Network, which is a key concern, especially for rural areas across the state. Not so much an, an issue here, but, but it is in other parts of the state.
I believe Kent has been working on this for four years.
Well, this one, really, just this past year.
Congratulations. I don't mean to throw gasoline on this, but what about a bottle bill at the time? I mean, Iowa does one, and I, I don't know what the other states do, but it sure seems like we're, we ought to be talking about a massive collection of plastic and all that sort of thing, and with the, the cities introducing a plastic bag ban and, maybe we should do that, I think there's some senators out there that have the gumption to do that, another word for that, but gumption to do that.
This just came across from my email about two hours ago.
Okay.
This is a, this is a federal legislation.
Okay.
That, I believe, would, would talk about a number of different things, very much, I mean, it's, it's from carryout bags to anything and everything. So I, I haven't looked at this in any great detail, but again, this is, this is a, an EPR, extended producer responsibility type.
Might email that to us?
Sure.
Just so we can see what they're talking about.
So, so this is, this is very, very much from a federal level, but this is, this is the way the industry is going. There is more and more of a push for what's called extended producer responsibility, which also have, then helps incentivize companies that produce the product to deal with the packaging piece of it. If they're responsible for dealing, for, for having to deal with the packaging, they will design better packaging that can be better recycled and reused. So, so it provides an incentive there, as opposed to a.
I, I believe it's Massachusetts that is, is fed up with young, young people getting alcohol. What they've done is they've required the sellers at the point of purchase to have a, they have, it's not a label, because that could be torn off, but they absolutely, they punch the cardboard with the, uh, the name of the company or a code, which I can't remember which it is, so when they go out drinking and everything else, like Sarpy County's trying to find out, "E the hell, so go on with that alcohol," to those four girls that were killed. They have no clue, no one's stepping up. The beverage thing is thrown on the doors, as you know, Joe Dokes Liquor Store. So it's really an interesting law enforcement thing that could be another, another, I guess, way to encourage people in working on this. The Mad Mothers would probably love that.
Yes, I, I will email that.
Great.
Thank you.
So just, just to identify kind of. So, just, just to identify kind of what, what's going on here, we have an interlocal with the City of Omaha and Sarpy County for the funding and operation of, under the sink, our household hazardous waste facility here. And we continue to see increases in the amount of product that's brought in, and a lot of this is related to latex paint. So, there's, there's serious discussions about kind of how we, how we best handle this. So, so that's why, that's why I'm devoting some time to it. I think it's a long-term best interest for not only the metro area, but also Lincoln and, and the rest of the state to get a better handle on how we're dealing with HHW and, and do it more comprehensively, so that ultimately, it's a better, it's a better situation.
Do you ever consider taking any of those large quantities of latex paint to Habitat or anything?
That, that's a component there. Interestingly enough, Lincoln did that very, very rigorously for several years.
Yeah.
And then find out that Habitat kind of got out of it, because now California, who has the paint care program that I just spoke about, they're actually providing stuff from California. So, paint that's being used here in Nebraska is actually coming from California. If we had the same deal here, we could be dealing with our paint stuff and Habitat here locally potentially could be using that.
Should we do that?
It requires state-enabling legislation. So, I can see coming out of, out of this HHW working group, a recommendation that, that the state support that enabling legislation, which would allow, which would allow...
Soul Fair and Bours took all their returned latex paints and replended them, usually into a downer or a...
They did what?
Reblended them.
Oh, I see.
And they do that to oil basins and saltwater. They had to read the label carefully, because some of the latex back then had a little bit of a morning light, and it wouldn't mix with the ones that didn't, and it was currying. Same thing with the saltlands and the oil basins. They knew what they were doing.
Yeah.
And I know somebody who used to buy that, and that's paint from them, sell it cheap.
Wow, that's great.
So, one of the things that also happened last year as a result of the flood, the City of Omaha was taking some of the latex paint, and they would take it to their wastewater treatment facility and basically spread it out and dry it, stuff that wasn't reusable. And then it can be disposed of. Well, what happened with the flooding is that they no longer had the ability to do that. And so, there was an excess of paint there that had to get packaged in and shipped out for, for disposal. So, that was some of the additional, kind of, I'm going to think, what a flood has to do with, with latex paint. There we go. The Heartland 2050 Solid Waste Working Group, it's always the group that the Commissioner Craft had identified. There's, there's two main things that this working group is, is kind of focusing on. One is just the communication, the education. We're terming it one message, one voice, so that there's a consistent message about how you ought to handle yard waste, how you ought to handle recyclables. The thing, China was mentioned earlier. The big thing with, with China and why they ended up banning stuff was that there was so much contamination in the materials that were being sent over there that, and they were, they were sorting through half of it and throwing half of it away. And so, you, you really can't blame them. The China thing, in my estimation, is, is probably the best thing that could have ever happened to the, to the United States in terms of the recycling program, because it forces the United States and others to do a better job and, and not, do a better job with contamination. And so, the message that needs to get sent out there is that you have to recycle the right way, you need to not just throw everything into the recycle bin, because it's not all recyclable. So, there's a, there's a big education component there that, that has to be played out. And then the circular economy, by that is simply, can we create a demand here for products? So, it's like the latex paint thing. Could, could we create a, a demand here for Habitat or, or somebody else to be able to use that? There are some things going on with the plastics manufacturers in the state, trying to identify them, some opportunities to use recycled content as opposed to virgin material in their processing. And part of it has to deal with the people who are buying the product asking for recycled content. And so, part of that discussion also gets to, like, our purchasing department, who does have a recycled content policy with that. And so, we try to, we try to push that as well. But having more and more demand for recycled products locally helps that entire situation. Shifting gears a little bit, just a note about State Street. We continue to maintain gas collection system out there. It's just kind of a, a point of emphasis. It's an aging infrastructure. That system's been in place for 25-plus years, and we have, we have issues with it that, that are just going to require us to, to make some investments in some new, new equipment and, and new infrastructure.
Can you, you'd be bringing that to the...
This, this will kind of get updated on a yearly basis. We, we work with Joe on some of the financial assurances that we're required to have under our post-closure permit.
Yeah, we still have like $270,000 in trust, along with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. And I think it's been, it's going on 25 years, so when that 25 years is up, there's going to be a review and kind of, I guess, a decision on how all this gets treated going forward, right?
Yeah.
This has got to be the oldest methane recovery system in the state.
Correct.
Because I believe it was the first one put in. But at what point, and of course, the landfill had been closed for a while before we got it in, we missed some methane.
Correct.
Already coming off. At what point will there not be enough methane left to be worth keeping, putting money in?
That, it gets to the point where, where it doesn't become an environmental hazard, where it doesn't become a safety hazard.
But we're a ways off.
Yeah, we're, we're still a ways off from that. I, I would, I would say that we're probably about 10 years away from a point where we, that would even be a consideration.
Okay.
We have BRD, the company that we have, the third party that, that's now taking that, cleaning the gas up and putting it into MUD's pipeline for sale. So, there's, there's beneficial uses that are being applied here. Again, the infrastructure before it even gets to the gas plant are, that's the issue.
All right, good.
Shifting big gears over to the land use regulations update, that's going through the Planning Commission right now. We're looking at zoning regulations and stormwater management policies and regulation. And, excuse me, out, let's stay here. A little bit about the components of the zoning regulations that will change a little bit. One, we're adding a small cell wireless component, and has nothing to do with the picture there, but small cell wireless is, is kind of the newest player in terms of, of mobile communication. It's, you know, all of the devices that everyone has, particularly in urban areas where you have a lot of those devices. The cell companies need to be able to place these facilities in the right of way. And the small cell wireless regulation that will be added to, to our existing wireless regulations are, those are patterned after the City of Omaha's, and we feel like that, that is the best thing going forward, so that there's consistency there. But this is, this just regulates on how, how these cell companies can put stuff in the right of way, because that can be pretty problematic if we don't have that in place.
Who, who does this serve, the cell phone, individual cell phone users, is that it?
Yeah, ultimately, yes.
It's like if they're doing downtown with all those big things on the poles, that kind of stuff?
Most, most of the small cell wireless stuff is, is placed on existing infrastructure poles, but some of it also could be placed on, on new things in the right of way. And part of the concern is, once you have that there, and you have additional utility work to do, you know, how, how do you work around these things? They have to be consistent with, with site distances and, and those types of things.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. The flood plain overlay is, is a component of the zoning regulations. We're looking to do a couple of things with that. One is to increase the base flood elevation for redevelopment and significant redevelopment. And basically, it's, our, our current regulation indicates that, that the base flood elevation is one, or you need to elevate any new construction to one foot over the base flood elevation. We want to raise that to two feet. We think that will, will also help alleviate some property damage. Also, would minimize some of the other building that, that would occur out in the flood plain area. And then the other one is, is to take into account this cumulative, what I'm calling cumulative cost of improvements, where you'll have people who are in a flood-prone area doing improvement to their, to their house that is less than 50%. And so, by regulation, they can do that without basically having to elevate or do anything else. And then they'll come in a few years later and do something else. And it's just, it, it's almost, I guess, akin to going to purchasing and saying, well, I'm going to bid out 100 thou, or I'm going to do a $100,000 project, but I'm only going to do it in $10,000 increments, so that I can get around all those requirements. So, this is just a thing that, that helps to kind of save, in some cases, save people from themselves, because ultimately, if you've got a house that's now valued at, at a certain amount, and somebody, you want to sell that house, the next person coming in, unless they're going to pay cash, they're going to have a mortgage on it. And the mortgage isn't going to happen unless they have flood insurance. And the flood insurance is going to be so prohibitively expensive on that particular facility that they won't be able to have, won't be able to make it work with the bank. And so, now we'll have a vacant house out there that's, that's not able to do anything. So, we're going to have some of those situations. We want to be able to, to curtail those and, and not allow those to happen. Couple notes about stormwater regulations. We had a new permit that was implemented by, by the state on behalf of the EPA in 2018. And as part of that, we need to put in some more defined quantitative components to that regulation. So, so we're looking at doing that. That will require a little bit of a, of a tweaking to what we have in existence with our policies. And, and one of the other things that we've noticed in, in the 10 years or so that the policies have been in place, that there are certain things there that, that don't work, I think, maybe as they were intended. And I think there's also going to have to be a discussion about whether we want to continue with kind of a joint policy with Washington County, because Washington County, their, their land use policies are, are really pretty different than ours. And some of the things that we will have in our, our stormwater management regulation are not going to be very consistent. We're going to have to word things a little bit differently, and just the whole, the whole way that we have conservation design and that we, we require a lot of open space around streams and, and require those buffers is going to be different than the way Washington County does. So, we may have some, some recommendations coming forward that are going to be a little bit different there. There's still, I mean, it's not, it's not going to be that we're doing anything really different than what we're doing right now, but we have to show from a permit standpoint that we have some, some quantitative things in place, and I think explain those a little bit better, as to how they fit in the context of, of overall policy.
Our priorities are similar to Washington County's, and that's how we ended up on the same side of the table. Everybody that we met with is now gone. They're all gone, everybody from Washington County. And I wouldn't expect them to be as rigorous as we are. I mean, we can have the same priorities, but you still, this is good, this is as it should be.
They, and they, Washington County does not have a permit. They do not have a permit requirement, and so, we're automatically going to be different than them. So, just wanted to give you the heads up, we are, we are working with RDG, who has, has helped us in the past with, with some of the stormwater management stuff. And we'll have that recommendation in front of the Planning Commission probably in, in March. And I would anticipate that you will see all of the regulatory updates consistent with what we did with the con plan in 2018. You'll have that probably in, by May at the latest, so.
Can I ask you a question before you go there? I wanted to ask you about the NRD, I mean, now we're fighting the Army Corps of Engineers. I mean, I, it's, I am really upset to see them taking more prime farmland for recreational purposes, you know, it just makes me nuts. And they found a way now to do the federal government instead of, they were bad enough, but now the feds are just like, forget it. What do we, what do we do? We can't do anything about them, really. I mean, they've got a bonding authority, and they've got, you know, they're held in on doing this stuff. Supposedly that damn their building is going to protect flooding and exerment. I mean, give me a break. Anyway, I just, I'm still concerned about it. I'm, I think the NRD's been out of control, is out of control, so.
The, the 1201, LB1201 legislation that you voted to support this morning. There are some flood plain mitigation type things in that, that I think going forward probably makes some sense for, for Douglas County. And there's a community rating system component that the flood insurance, well, it's part of the flood insurance program. And we'll probably look at strongly at getting into that, that will help with flood insurance issues for, for our citizens. And we'll, we'll continue to look at things, kind of the experience from the 2019 flood, and identify things that, that make more sense for us to do. One of them is to probably put dumpsters out there immediately. And, and so that when people are cleaning out houses immediately, then the stuff goes directly into the dumpster as opposed to into a pile and then having to get moved again. So, I think that's, that's one of the, the big takeaways that we saw initially. So, I, I think we've got a better understanding of how FEMA is going to work and not work this, this time, so, the next time it comes around.
Yeah.
So, hopefully not soon. The, a few months ago, the county board passed a, or approved an interlocal agreement with Ralston for Supervision Inspection Services. I can tell you, Ralston, since that time, has, has decided in a couple of different ways not to proceed. So, I'm probably going to, I'm going to bring this back and just have the board rescind that, that article of that, because even if Ralston changes their mind and, and wants to do this again, there's going to be some additional due diligence involved. So, right now, I, I anticipate that I'll probably have this back on your agenda, just to say, hey, we want to kind of rescind.
Should we annex it? Oh, no, I didn't say that.
Why did, did they say any reasons?
The, the administrator who was, who was pushing this is no longer there.
Oh.
So, so I think that, that's part of it.
Okay.
And I think there was some, there were some concerns. I, I went to their city council meeting where they, they were discussing it. There were some concerns there that, that this was, this was not what Ralston wanted.
Okay.
So, that's.
Wow.
So, yeah. Real quickly, the Village of Washington in Washington County is located kind of up here, they have a one-mile jurisdiction, and that then allows them to have their ETJ line go into actual Douglas County. So, they've approached us, and we've, we've had some discussions with them. It looks like we are getting close on a potential interlocal agreement that would allow the Douglas County to exercise control over this in one form, form or another.
How can that cross county law?
Yeah, I didn't think ETJs could cross county law.
For, for that purpose, apparently so.
Wow.
So, anyway, this is something that we are, are attempting to resolve. We're also going to resolve kind of the issue with Bennington, because this is, this kind of elongated football shape right here is kind of a disputed ETJ area between Bennington and the Village of Washington. So, anyway.
And ETJ stands for?
Extra Territorial Jurisdiction.
Got it.
Have we, I'm sure you've talked about it.
Oh, yes, yes.
What did they say?
They are, they basically have crafted an interlocal agreement for consideration.
And what will be in the interlocal? We don't touch you, you don't touch us?
No, but it, it basically is that this, this area right here will be subject to the county's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations.
They subject to our benefit?
Yes, it is, absolutely. It is, it is to our, the citizens' benefit, is that our, our comprehensive plan and zoning regulations are pretty restrictive in terms of, of pushing development to the places where it ought to be. It protects natural resources, stormwater. It's very progressive in that, that regard. And it, it sets this area up for orderly development in the future, if that occurs.
And is there going to, and is there going to be a cost on our part associated with that?
Nothing more than the regular costs that we would have to administer any land use applications. And for the most part, those costs are borne by the applicant.
Excuse me. Can I plant a seed? We had a meeting last night with seven or eight landowners who live in an area near 210th and State Street. And they want the county to build a, improve their road, which is private. They don't have an SID. They sort of have a neighborhood association. There's 15 owners, or 18 owners, rather. And 14 of them are foreign. And so they made the remark that we were right just exactly where we need to be. We've got a majority. Well, there's four that don't want to do it. And they want us to loan them the money or, you know, and they pay us, which we're not doing because we have 417 of those private streets in the county.
Yeah.
And anyway, so we're not going to do it. And I'm, they, one of the guys said, why didn't, why didn't anybody, when the county took us in, why didn't they tell us that they weren't going to keep maintaining the roads? And so I don't know, maybe that's something, I said, we're not maintaining the streets. It's at 210th and Sherwood or some such street, weird.
Why didn't, when the county took us in, the counties never changed our lines wherever they were?
No, it wasn't, I guess it was for a subdivision plan. We must have gone to the planning board and said, can you subdivide this? And it was approved. And there's some big lots in there, but there's a curvy road that needs to be, since 2002, needs to be worked on. And they want us to form a unit, pay for it, and then I guess we pay for it, period.
A rural road improvement district, yeah, which nobody does.
Did you have anybody from the engineer's office out there?
Yeah, Koodak came. Koodak told him no deal.
Okay, you had Koodak there, you were going to ask?
We told him no deal too, but we're trying to figure out some way to help him.
Okay.
But anyway, that's just a suggestion.
Do you need to follow up with Dan on that?
Only to find out how it went. It wasn't a good deal, but the people were courteous. But in the future, when we do approve plaits for subdivisions, we probably need to make it clear that we don't, we don't do windows.
Dan is, Dan always makes that point very distinctly. And if there's, if there are, if there are any private roads there, that is always a very clear distinction.
Right, it's not a county road, right.
The county is not going to maintain that. If you're going to dedicate it as a public street, that's a different scenario.
I mean, they did a subdivision without a homeowners association.
I think what it needs to happen, it needs to be in the, when the planning board grants a permit to do that stuff, it'll be right in there, we don't do windows, we don't maintain roads.
Typically, I think that would be noted on the plat.
They said it wasn't.
Okay, all right. Easy, easy to look into.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Wanted to just, this is, this is not something where we get a lot of complaints, but a couple of weeks ago, Mike Reed was giving you a presentation. And I already showed you that picture. So I just wanted to let you know that one of the things that we are moving towards is to have more online citizen complaint access. So right now, dot com has kind of moved and the GIS folks have moved away from kind of the mobile app piece and are doing this OmahaHotline.com, which covers all of Douglas County. And basically, hopefully this thing comes up.
Oh, it's waiting. Why are we doing another hotline? City and the county both have one.
This is just the name of the website thing.
Is this already an existing website?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't want another one.
Yes, it already exists. And for whatever reason, it's not coming up. Okay.
Do I have?
Get your hammer up, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay. So it'll come up like this and it just gives you the ability to go in and search on a different number of different potential complaints. The beauty of this is that when you submit a report, you know, let's say I'm out here in Douglas County someplace and I see a weed issue or a tree issue. I can click on that, submit a report. That will get routed directly to Mike Reed. It's in the work management system, City Works on the backend. And so it's already in the queue and we can all already use that for record of processing and we can use it for reporting and our responsibility is that way.
What happened to City Source?
That one is now obsolete.
Because I tried to use it.
That one is now obsolete.
What's the site for this?
It is OmahaHotline.com.
Okay, is that the city as well?
Yes.
Okay, because you don't do graffiti, do you?
The graffiti is going to get routed to whoever is in the, is listed as that, that contact.
All right, thanks.
All right. A couple of notes about stormwater. I've already indicated there's a new permit we got in 2019. We're going to make those updates to the regulations. There's also been some renewed discussion about a stormwater utility fee. This was acted back in 2002, '03 and '04, prior to, or right after the stormwater permits came out. And the legislature decided, no, they wanted no part of that. And so they allocated $2.5 million for grants. Well, those grants now have come and gone. So now there's especially the city of Lincoln and to some extent Omaha. And certainly Lincoln is now talking about renewing that discussion about a stormwater utility fee, which probably would be based on impervious surfaces. So more to come on that. The other thing I was pointing out, we do provide some Center for Wilderness Protection webinars. And we make those available. We pay for the subscription to that. And then we have these webinars that are held, I believe there's eight of them over the course of the year, and provide lunch. People pay for that. And basically, it's a, it's a kind of a new revenue expense neutral proposition to provide some good training for folks locally. There's always some good topics. And it's, it also helps us to provide that requirement for our stormwater permit in terms of education. So this is one of the new bioretention gardens out at the Fitz. So we've got some nice wildflower stuff that's started in there. This is one that's next to the new parking lot at the Health Center. And we've got some issues with that. Working, so working on that. So some new things to work on. Very briefly, showed you this a few months ago, West Campus Landscape Concept Plan, looking at trying to create some additional trees along streets and parking lots to provide some stormwater benefits there, some shading. Also creating some pollinator habitat type things, some walking trails to fit with our wellness program and so on. I'll have this to you in a more formal fashion here in the coming months. We're also proposing some new sidewalks to go with the visitor lots at the Fitz. These are the two, West Maple Road is up here. And here are the two visitor lots. And in green here is the sidewalks that would be installed, coming on a diagonal here. And then pedestrian crosswalks being marked here to assist with public safety. These are future potential sidewalks, but these two we're looking to install in the spring. Health Center Landscape, couple of things. Revising the overall concept plan. Need to make a decision on the 42nd Woolworth sign in terms of campus signage. And the bioretention garden modifications. You saw a picture of the one that's not working very well. We need to get that figured out. Yes?
There's always been a real serious problem with personnel leaving late at night with insufficient lighting. Can we get that programmed in here too to make the place just sunshine, you know?
Okay.
Make them feel safe, they need to be safe. Thank you.
Okay. And the last thing I have is our contract with Jack Phillips Consulting Arbors. We utilize him for a number of different things related to the landscape. Probably one of the most important parts is that I have him go out into the nurseries we contract with to pick out the trees and inspect them, make sure that we're getting quality plant materials. And then he helps oversee some of the volunteer help that we use for planting and so on. And it's a good resource. I work very closely with him on tree assessments, making sure that we don't have hazard trees that are going to cause some potential safety issues. So that will be back, that contract will be in front of you probably in a couple of weeks.
And he does a good job.
Does an excellent job. Does an excellent job. So that's all I have, so.
Actually, I have more questions.
When do you stay after class?
Sorry.
You can ask it.
Okay. I was going to be obedient. I'm really concerned about the number of dead trees around. There's more and more cutting. I think we're going to lose all the trees out here in the front because they're the wrong species. What I'm really concerned about are private, our homes, the trees that are on private property that cost, the big ones are thousands of dollars to remove. I haven't talked to the mayor about this and maybe this is something the county ought to do. I'd like to see somebody step up and say, we'll allow you to put this on your property tax, you know, like you do a sidewalk and pay for the $2,000 or $3,000 removal of that big tree. And you can pay us for two years and we get an agree with the arborist that they'll take these extended payments or something and figure out a way to make this work so we're not stuck with a payment. That's how I want to do that. But these things are big. And I use the North Freeway quite often to go out to my family's home out west. And boy, there's some big trees in those little houses, the yards, that's just really in trouble. They're never going to be able to remove those trees. I just wonder if there's anything I'd like us to investigate doing that. The other thing I'd like to ask is, believe it or not, well, years ago, we put a median there, 132nd and Pacific, we planted wildflowers. And it was beautiful, really stunning. But people were stopping and walking across the street and picking, picking flowers. So we had to remove the whole thing. And I do think this is a real place, those are fabulous fields because they just come back and rejuvenate. We ought to be working with, get ready, Master Gardeners at Extension to do this, you know?
A lot of electric fence.
Yeah, you're right.
Put a wall up.
Anyway, that's what I think we ought to be doing. We ought to do a lot of things with wildflowers because they just, that's great to see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be more of that at the Fitz.
And I think we've covered other things.
I think we have, except I can't get Omaha Hotline.
I will, I will send that.
We probably have your number.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Andy. Absolutely.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner.